We'll conduct the organizational meeting where we will elect our board officers for 2014. Just to go over the process briefly. Nominations do not have to be seconded. A member can nominate themselves. There is no discussion. Votes are recorded votes, so we'll have roll call votes. And we'll do it in the honor of President, Vice President, and Secretary. Any questions on those procedures? Okay. The Chair will entertain nominations for President.
I would like to nominate you, sir, please.
Okay. Okay, we have a nomination. Are there any additional nominations? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Trustee Fries?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmer?
Aye.
Vice President Heft?
Yes.
President Holden, yes. Trustee Delhae?
Yes.
Trustee Heineck?
Aye.
The recorded vote is six in favor, zero opposed, and one absent. The Chair will entertain nominations for Vice President. I will nominate Craig Heft as Vice President. Any additional nominations? Roll call vote. Trustee Fries?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmer?
Yes.
Vice President Heft?
Yes.
President Holden, yes. Trustee Delhae?
Yes.
Trustee Heineck?
Aye.
The recorded vote is six yes, zero opposed, one absent. Chair will entertain nominations for Secretary.
I'd like to nominate Paul Heineck.
Any additional nominations for Secretary? Trustee Fries?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmer?
Yes.
Vice President Heft?
Yes.
President Holden, yes. Trustee Delhae?
Yes.
Trustee Heineck?
Yes.
Okay, the recorded vote is six in favor, zero opposed, one absent. So we have our new officers for 2014. Congratulations to Paul and to the Chief. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting. Moved by now Secretary Heineck, seconded by Trustee Delhae. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now call to order the regular meeting. And at this time, members of the public may address the Board for up to three minutes. Is there anybody who wishes to address the Board this evening?
All right, just a couple of quick announcements. One, I'd like to pass along kudos to the grounds and maintenance staff for their work over the snow days, not only getting our facilities open, but also kind of maintaining and protecting our facilities. We were able to get back to school on Thursday, did the next job of having the facilities ready, and certainly our transportation department also did an outstanding job of giving our students here safely on that day. Last night, had the opportunity to participate as a judge in the Poetry Outlaw Contest. There were about thirty students participating, over a hundred audience members, including the entire English Department, on hand to watch that event. And this is a qualifying event for a state competition. The five finalists were Matthew Eby, Meghana Shakur, Ravi Amori, Kaylee Kaplachek, and Lizzie Whedon. Out of that thirty, they came and they had to recite a second poem that they had about fifteen minutes to learn and recite. Sophomore Matthew Eby was the champion. He will go on to the state Poetry Outlaw Finals on March thirteenth and fourteenth at Michigan State University. We are going to talk to him and ask him if he may, to see if he could come to the meeting right before that on the eleventh and recite the poem he will be reciting in that competition. So we have an opportunity to kick it off with that maybe in March. Then I'd like to lastly introduce Rex Clary. Rex is our new director of facilities. If you see him around, it's a little warmer here tonight, it's been cold, now Rex is here taking care of the heating and cooling issues. Certainly a baptism by fire in terms of snow and some of the other things with Mr. Baker being gone for a while. He's had to kind of hit the ground running, has done an excellent job. So it's great to have him on board. He's a Saline grad, twenty years in the door and window of business, and comes to us ready to go. So welcome aboard. That's all I have.
Okay. Anything from board members?
Just a reminder, the Foundation's Snow Blast 2014. Tickets are on sale now.
Now, and you should be getting invitations in the mail.
Yep, invitations went out. I actually got mine today. It's February eighth, it's going to be at Travis Point. Tickets are fifty dollars a person, ninety dollars a couple, and that includes appetizers and things, and they usually have games and a presentation and things like that. So come on out and support the Foundation.
Right before Christmas break, there was a volleyball powder puff challenge match up at the high school put on by the student council for food gatherers, I think. Was not, I think it was kind of a last minute deal, was not advertised real well, but was a very fun event, and I think they will probably do it again next year, but kids all seem to have a good time.
The juniors won, I believe?
The juniors won.
Upset?
Followed closely by the sophomores.
Excellent. Excellent. I'd just like to thank my colleagues for asking me and electing me President for another year. It's certainly a privilege, and I accept that with humility and gratitude, and hope that I can continue to service the Board and the community well. We all have the CBA handbook with the classes that are going to be offered this year. I encourage everyone to take a look if there's classes you're interested in. We do have money budgeted for that, so go ahead and do that. I know there's a two-day session coming up, I think it's in February, and it's a labor contract negotiation class. And I'm going to try to make that, and I think we may have somebody from the administration also attend that. And then I got an email today, and I'm going to pass it on to Raphael and Diane. It's going to be on Monday, January the twenty-seventh. I have a conflict, but it's going to be held in Ann Arbor, and it's going to be a student-driven forum, and they're going to have elected officials there. And I know Representative Rutledge is committed to be there, Superintendent Menzel from the ISD is going to be there. I was invited, I, you know, I went back to them and said, "I can't make it." I said, "Can I send another board member?" So I'm waiting to hear back. I'm sure there won't be a problem. So I'll pass that email on to both of you. And Raphael, you may be interested in going from the student end to participate as well.
Is this January?
Yeah, January twenty-seventh, it's a Monday. And I think it's three-thirty to five-thirty. So I'll pass that on to you. Also, just in terms of housekeeping, I think we do want to have a retreat sometime within the next month. So take a look at your calendars, maybe some, you know, shoot some suggested dates at me. I mean, we can do a Saturday morning, or we could do something in the evening. We'll kind of get a consensus of what works best for the group when we do that. I think at that retreat, we'll set our goals for this year. I think we want to have close alignment with the superintendent goals and also the strategic framework. So I don't think there's a lot of heavy lifting there to do, but we want to make sure that we have alignment as we move through the year. And that's all I have. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So, Chief?
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Fries. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Scheduled reports, we have Bob Rosenberger from Saline Main Street for an encore appearance.
Thank you for letting me come back and share with you a little more about Saline Main Street. It's the, still the new year, isn't it? It's close enough. So with that in mind, I thought we would just spend five minutes chatting a little bit about what we, what we plan to do, some of our more major events in the first quarter of 2014. And I'm proud to tell you that we have some alliances with students, so we're excited about that as well. So you know from, when I visited before, that we have four teams, like every other Main Street community in the U.S. There are more than two thousand of them. They're all governed by four teams, the organization team, the design team, the promotions team, and an economic restructuring team, we call ours, the Business and Economic Success Team. We like that better than restructuring, it sounds better. So we'll take them individually, and I'll just share a couple things with each one. The organization team will be in there. We have a new program called, that we're kicking off this year called Downtown Matters. I know that's backwards, but these are clings that you can put on your window of your car or your home, so I have one for each of you, so I'll just pass those out. Downtown Matters is a nice slogan, because our downtown really does matter. It matters to our tax base, it matters to the look of our town, it matters a lot for just Saline in general. But it's more than that for Saline Main Street. It's, it's a program to build awareness, to let people know that downtown matters, that we're working to make sure that our downtown is vibrant, alive, growing, and thriving. And we're going to begin by working or trying to build awareness with residents, because our residents are really an important part of our community and can be a very important part of Saline Main Street, and making sure that our downtown matters. So Downtown Matters is a program that we'll be working on this year. We're also going to be working on our volunteer development. As you know, we are almost exclusively a volunteer organization. We rely on volunteers. Our volunteers are awesome, and we have great volunteers. And many of you have volunteered for us, and we appreciate that. We want to make sure that we have volunteers that are happy volunteers, that they're working in areas that they enjoy, that they're doing things that they like, so they'll come back and help us again. Also, we want them to grow and learn as they're going, so we'll be working on volunteer development this year. From our design team, you're familiar, I'm sure, with Leather Bucket Alley. Leather Bucket Alley was named Leather Bucket Alley, it was a name that was proffered by Chief Heft. It's named Leather Bucket Alley because across the street from where the alley is, there was a fire station, I don't know, was it eighteen-hundred, chief? And they stored, I know, we were just kids then, right?
Hanging around.
But they, they stored the leather buckets that they used to put out the fires across the street in the alleyway. That's the alley between Mangiamo's and Brecken Grill and Benito's Pizza. So, and by the way, if you haven't had a chance, we cleaned the alley up, it looks really nice. We have an archway, but they weren't able to put the sign up on the arch until the weather cleared a little bit. It's been a little nice the last few days, so the sign is up, so stop by and take a look. It looks really nice out there. Anyway, we're going to put lighting. I don't know, I can't remember, it's triply or tively? Tively lighting. It sweeps across, you know, that kind of lighting, kind of like you would see in an Italian restaurant. So that's part of our program for this year. And we're also invoking, or not invoking, but we're, I can't think of the word, we're going to start a program on the banners that we have in downtown. You know, the banners that are on the streetlights. We have a need for some new banners. And so we're going to do a program that we're calling Why I Love Saline, and we're hoping to involve the high school by asking high school students to design their own banners, and then we'll get them made up and put them up. And that should be a source of pride, not only for the students who design them, but for the town or the city in general. So we're looking forward to that also. Our promotion team is designed, basically has promotions, you know, events, things that are designed to bring people downtown. We have three that are coming up this first quarter. The snowman building championship of the free world is taking place on January twenty-fifth, and you should know that we are the reigning champs. Saline is the reigning champs. Saline is the reigning champ? We are, anyway. And so that will take place on the twenty-fifth, weather permitting. We are not doing Winter Fest this year. Winter Fest was, had a dwindling participation esque, I think it's specifically because it's so weather-dependent, and we've had pretty mild winters the last several. So far, this one hasn't been that way. But we'll see whether we have enough snow to build snowmen on January twenty-fifth. If we do, it's from one to three, please come down, we need volunteers, we need people to build snowmen, we need people to cheer us on, so please feel free to do that. And by the way, part of that same festivity, that same day, Fifth Corner is running a five K that begins at noon, and so we're hoping that we'll have people there, not only to run, but to run as well. Music Under the Arch is a, is back again in 2014, the third Thursday of every month. We have an artist or two. This Thursday, January sixteenth, it's Kathy Cousins. She has been written up as, I think it was in, I don't remember the name of the magazine, but it was, it was one of the music magazines as one of the greatest voices in jazz in today's world. So she's, she's quite, quite good, and we're looking forward to that. So Music Under the Arch, obviously at Stone Arch. And then we have a new event this year called Taste of Saline, that's March twenty-first. Taste of Saline is an opportunity for people to come downtown and see what we have in our stores, and see the artists and artisans that we have in Saline. So we'll have, you might go into the Pineapple House, for example, and see all of the things that are in Pineapple House, and I don't know that this is specific, it's just an example, but you may have a, someone there, a chef, who's offering some things to eat. You may walk across the street and downways and go to Cobblestone Rose, and there may be a quartet playing music in there. So it's going to be a lovely evening, great night for couples, though you don't need to bring a friend, you can come all by yourself if it's the weekend. And then our Business and Economic Success Team, we are working on business training. We're working with Spark right now to, they have a new business training that they put on in Ypsilanti every month. We're asking them to bring it to Saline, and we're going to try to do that maybe in March or April. We still haven't solidified a date. It's a great opportunity for us to do that, how to start a new business. And also, we have on January twenty-eighth, Kristy Treberow, who's the Downtown Development Authority Director in Rochester, Michigan, and a great trainer, had the opportunity to be in some of her classes. She's a phenomenal trainer, great energy, great exert, great enthusiasm and great knowledge of her subject. Is coming to town to do a social media training for anyone, the public's invited. I just want to, I ask you if you, if you want to come, it's from nine to eleven in the morning. If you want to come, please let me know, because we're going to house it at the Saline Main Street office. But the Torminas at Mangiamo Restaurant have been kind enough to say that if we outgrow our, our facility, our office, that they'll let us use their upstairs. So we're hoping that we have to move the event to upstairs at Mangiamo. So I also want to pass around these, they are just a little folder to let you know a little bit about Saline Main Street, and, or to remind you a little bit about Main Street, and I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
What's the, you know, with you guys have talked a little bit about new businesses, what is the economic outlook that you're seeing in Saline?
I think the economic outlook is great. We've had three new businesses open up in the last several months, downtown. We've had a lot more opening than closing. We have more storefronts that are occupied now than we had even a year ago. So I think the outlook is great. Certainly, we have work to do. We have a few vacancies, and we have a blank space, a hole in the wall, if you will, at one forty-seven West Michigan. That's a, that's a piece of property that's begging to be developed, so we're hopeful. We continue to work towards that end of the city.
We keep hearing talk about a microbrewery. Is that coming any closer?
I hear that talk as well. I don't, I can't tell you that we're any closer. We've had some people who talked about it, we have a lot of people who would be interested in it, you know, frequenting it, but we've had, we've had one or two potential business owners come in, nothing's come to fruition yet. Partly, it's because of space. You know, a microbrewery takes a specific sized space, you know, you've got to have tall ceilings and, and so we're working with them, though. We're hopeful. Maybe we can get one forty-seven developed to get a microbrewery.
Maybe a little bit off of Main Street, that the, where Country Market used to be and Blockbuster, any, any movement on those properties? I know there's been a change of ownership of that, of that property.
I haven't heard any rumors, oh, I've heard rumors, that's, that's not true. I have heard rumors, but I haven't heard anything that's been substantiated. That's outside of our district, so I really can't speak with any authority.
Got you.
But, but, you know, we're hopeful about that, too, because even though it's not downtown, it's still part of Saline and an important part of it.
Sure. Any additional questions from board members? Any of the, and the hospital, in terms of what's happening there and transitions and stuff?
Sorry, Mr. Zimmer, I don't, I don't know.
Thanks for coming. You're always welcome.
I appreciate it.
Keep us abreast of what's going on downtown, we welcome that.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
We have three action items tonight. The Chair will entertain a motion to appoint the Board's Recording Secretary, Patty Walz, Paul Heineck as the Board Secretary, and Superintendent Braden to serve as the Board's designees for posting legal notices. Support? Okay. Motion by Trustee Delhae, supported by Trustee Carter. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2013-14 budget amendment as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner. So, we have a motion by Secretary Heineck, seconded by Vice President Heft. Janice, the floor is yours.
So the original budget that was passed last June had a surplus budget of $794,000. This amended budget shows increased revenue of $890,000, increased expenditures of $1.1 million, so a net change in budget of negative $286,000. It leaves us with a budget surplus of $507,000 and our amended ending fund balance of $2.5 million. It's just under the five percent board policy. This does include the updated beginning fund balance from the audit last year. On the revenue side, that $890,000 is made up of several different things. We did have an additional ten FTE of students over what we had budgeted. We had budgeted a loss of twenty, and we had a loss of ten students. We had some categorical changes, mainly because of the change in the blended count, based on our count. We did have some increased federal funding in allocations and also carryover money from last year. Other changes included additional tuition from the Young Adult Program, the sale of assets from Hopewood Elementary. We don't have a final figure on that yet, but that's in there, and additional funding from intermediate sources. The, the last item is additional foundation allowance from our Y-Hi students. As you know, that program is in its third year, so they added another freshman class of about forty-two, and so that is the foundation allowance for students that are either residents or school of choice, Saline residents, or Y-Hi, and that flows through our foundation allowance. It will net to zero because expenditures will, will net it out on the other side. On the expenditure side, we do have net changes in staffing costs of $586,000. We did add about six certified staff positions this, this year, about thirteen para-educator positions. We reclassified some staff, for example, Laura Washington was hired as the assistant principal at middle school, and we eliminated the contracted student position. So there were a variety of changes there. That also captures the current open enrollment figures for health insurance. Mr. Ellis informed me that the two-person rate for the hard cap was changed to twelve and a half thousand dollars, up from, I think it was eleven thousand, three sixty-eight. That's about forty thousand dollars to our cost for this year for our two-person employees that take that. And some changes with the one forty-seven C retirement stabilization rate. Had to spread those costs across all the funds, so that, that's captured there. It also captures the loss of the three teachers that we had been paying for the Y-Hi program. We no longer provide that staff, that staff is being paid by the county. And it, as a result, you will see that our contracted staffing and services cost went up by $679,000. That covers the move from staffing into contracted for those, those three staff members, plus the additional cost for the additional class of students that are at Y-Hi. But again, the revenue that we receive through foundational allowance is offset by those expenditures, so it's really pretty much a net zero cost to our budget. We just have to reflect it. In addition, in the contracted services, we have gone ahead with the Plasco visitor management system to improve security in our buildings, and we also are instituting the Tracy time clock system this month that will really improve efficiency for a lot of employees around the district and improve accuracy for our HR department. The supply and equipment budget went up a little bit, that is mainly because we increased the building budgets by about ten percent. They are still running about half of what they were in the 2003 or '04 school year. So they're, they're operating on not very much money. We're recognizing some savings in utilities and waste management. We do continue to tweak our heating and cooling systems and recognize some savings there. And we're also working with a waste management company, which I've informed you about. Right off the bat, we'll be saving over twelve hundred dollars a month in, in the changes we've made with the waste management. And then the transfers out is mainly because the invoice that we got from the consortium this year, their bill went down considerably, about seventy-five thousand dollars. So that's what brings that up. As we look forward for the, to the final amendment that will take place in June, these are some of the items that we will have to look at. We have got the Section twenty-five instituted now where the foundational allowance follows the student. Just between the count date in October and December sixteenth, we had gained eight FTE of students. Now, in the last two weeks, we've lost two because other schools are starting to get, you know, their numbers in, so we don't really know how it's going to shake out at the end, but that number will be captured in the final amendment. Our self-funded insurance for both administrators and support staff for the first five months was running about a hundred and seventy-five thousand below budget, which is awesome. But again, we've got another seven months to go, and those numbers can swing considerably from month to month. Even in that five months, we're seeing a swing of a hundred thousand dollars in claims per month, so we'll see what happens there. For staffing and subcosts, we've got the first trimester under our belt, but we still have the second two to go for overages and overload, subcosts and things, so. Utilities, hopefully we won't have another polar vortex, and it will be mild for the rest of the winter, but we'll see. And then the main one is the unexpected repairs and technology. We've been paying for a lot of things through the capital projects funds. In 2010, we put proceeds from the sale of Union School into capital projects, it was over four hundred thousand dollars. That money is gone. What is left there, the hundred and fifty-two thousand remaining fund balance, is the franchise PEG fees that we get, and those have to be reserved for the TV studio capital outlay. So we are out of that cushion. If we have any unexpected repairs or technology needs that can't be covered by sinking fund, most repairs can, that will be a hit to the general fund. So that's going to be, that could be a very important piece right there. The other funds, I did update all of those budgets for their beginning fund balance, made some changes for one forty-seven C retirement stabilization, added some abated tax amounts for the debt fund, we got a fairly large one in this year. But other than that, there weren't any significant changes in the other funds. Looking forward for fourteen fifteen, these are just some of the items that we'll have to keep on our radar. Enrollment, of course, is always in a question, how many students we'll have, what will we do with school of choice this year. Foundation allowance categorical funding, the January consensus report was very positive. The school aid fund is running a surplus budget, which is great. They're building fund balance. They're building fund balance, but we don't know what they'll do with it. If they will increase our fund balance, if they're put it to the retirement unfunded liability, we don't know. The governor's budget should come out in February, and we'll have a little more information, and then it'll, it'll get tweaked hopefully by May or so. As you all know, contracts are up, all the contracts are up this year, so we'll be heading into negotiations. The hard cap increase will be 2.9% next year, and we will have some additional costs from the Affordable Care Act. Mr. Ellis and I have been talking about that. And then, what else is there? You know, there, there may be some new things on the horizon that we are not aware of at this point. So I think the end result is that we're much further ahead than we were, say, two years ago. We've more than doubled our fund balance in these two years. You know, all of the union groups have come to the table and helped us with labor costs. We've done school of choice and, you know, strategically used school of choice to increase our enrollment or maintain our enrollment, and we've done a lot to maintain our, or control our costs, you know, our operating costs and things. But we have to be diligent, we're still not at 5%. We don't know what's gonna happen with the state, you know, I don't know how many more storms we can weather without affecting our programs, affecting our staffing. So we're hoping that we're on the upstate, upswing, but we really need to stay diligent in, in trying to increase our fund balance. Are there any questions?
Questions? Well, it, you know, we're, we're $65,000 off of where we projected, which is halfway through the year, not bad. I mean, we still have a chance to attain that. I would ask Superintendent Grayden and his team to maybe do a little gap closure, look for, look for some low-hanging fruit there, maybe things that we can put off if it's possible, without impinging upon the quality of education we're providing. Other than that, I think we're, we're where we should be at this point in time. But, you know, we have to thread the needle, and, and that's nothing new here. We've been up on the tight rope for, for several years now, and I don't think that's gonna change, to be honest with you. And that, we can hope that we get more money from Lansing. You know, we are headed into an election year, that may impact some thinking in Lansing. And, but we have to focus on what we can control, and what we can't control, we have to advocate for, and, and we'll continue to do that.
Is this the place where I would ask where we're gonna find money for repairing buildings and that kind of stuff? I mean, we just said our structural fund has been consumed.
Well, I think, yeah, I'll jump the, you know, the frank answer is we don't have a savings account at this point. Yes, we have the fund balance that we need to be drawn on, we have clear board policy and objective associated with 5%, so essentially, we're at that push point in terms of where we're at. And I think, you know, as we talked about looking forward, I think, you know, one of the things we need to look at is for next year in particular, is what, what are realistic needs, and how do we go about carving out the dollars associated with that? So I think it's, it's a fair question, for the next six months, you know, it's not like a defense.
We have been putting the sinking funds aside for some of those.
There are some things, for example, a parking lot or something like that would happen, we do have some funds set aside for that.
But an actual repair can't be covered by sinking funds, it's more of a replacement.
Right. That's an example of advocacy, because sinking funds are too limited.
Exactly, yep, perfect example.
I would, I would anticipate and would suggest that when we have the retreat, that that be one of our topics. And I think we can have a, a good full discussion on that in terms of what the options are, and, and start planning from there.
Right now, I think we all need to knock on wood.
Does the Weber list schools pipe bursting impact our budget, is that?
That would be covered by insurance, there have been $1,000 or deductible.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the best practices incentive resolution as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner. Trustee Carter, do we have a second?
Second.
Trustee Breeze for a second. Assistant Superintendent Warner.
I did outline in the memo to you that we have met seven of the eight criteria to receive the best practices. So once the resolution is signed, we would receive about $52 per pupil, and that, I would get all of the documentation into the state, so that we, we would start receiving that in February, so.
The eighth one we don't have, what's our short, well, we don't have that.
And we actually do need it. Steve, do you want to speak to that one? It's on the testing.
Yeah, the, the eighth one that we're, we could do it, but we're choosing not to at this point once. There to be an electronic version of assessment in kindergarten through eighth grade of math and reading, and we have that at our upper grades, but we're hesitant about putting that electronic test down in kindergarten and first grade at this point. And so, we still need this criteria by being seven out of eight, and so at this point, we're choosing not to.
So it doesn't impact a lot of money?
Yeah, it's not gonna impact, right, if we needed to do it, we would do it to comply. At this point, we're not sure, that's a valuable thing for our kindergarten and upper graders, and we're trying to.
Well, when we adopt the Common Core, aren't we gonna have to do that?
Well, but even that smarter balance assessment is, is not scheduled to start until third grade anyway. So in theory, yes, we gotta prepare for that at the lower grades, but the assessment cycle of it being, you know, starting in third grade would still be in place at the smarter balance level.
So we'd have to put something in and then take it out, okay.
Yeah, you're right, and the value of testing kids a lot, and we always talk about trying to be sensitive about overtesting, and so we're, you know, we're at this point not moving forward with that.
And that criteria actually was that you had to plan for it to start in 14-15. You didn't actually have to be doing the testing this year, you just had to plan for it. And, so we decided not to do that, since we didn't need it.
And we already budgeted that we were gonna receive these funds, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes, so it's about $275,000.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Discussion items, Superintendent Grayden with a strategic framework update.
Just wanted to provide a quick update on a, on a couple of areas related to the strategic framework. One is just a little bit about what we've been doing. I wanna go back and talk a little bit at the end, and kind of gonna focus on one of the, one of the goal areas and one of the specific action steps, and then talk at the end about kind of what our, our process has been, and ultimately really lead us right into our retreat. As President Holden talked about, you know, really now is the time for us to have kind of, what I would say, more robust discussions about our strategic framework. You know, we, we adopted it last year, we begun that implementation process, and so really developing that cadence of accountability associated with this is, is really the critical part. So, this is what we're gonna go over tonight. The, kind of the update, one is, you know, what we've done, if you've established clear action plans for each action step. You remember there are five goal areas associated, and each of you have the, have the area, five goal areas. Those break down into 27 specific action steps, and I'll go over that, we've developed action plans for each of those. Develop subcommittees to look at those and determine the needs related to those, and again, I'll touch on that. When we started first-year implementation, and in doing so, you know, we started to get off the ground related to these action steps and the things we wanted to do, we, we already see we're gonna, we wanna want to alter some courses. So I think we wanna talk about, particularly at the retreat, kind of making, you know, informed decisions about that. We need to be serious about where we, where we said we're gonna go, and if we, if we need to alter course and, and think about that, now is the time for us to have those conversations, begin those conversations. It's that fluid planning process that we're now into. But we wanna continue to provide a clear and well-articulated vision for the future related to our staff and to our community. That becomes even more critical as we begin this implementation process, because it's important for our staff and our students and our community to understand where we're going. We're asking for change, we're desiring change, we're, we're really dealing with what I consider, we talked about the other day in a, in a meeting, that the pendulum that used to swing education, and people would always say is cyclical, and it's gonna come back, it has really changed, and now really is this concept of a sea of change. There's gonna be some constant shifting that occurs through the education process, how are we going to adapt to that? And I think in order for our staff and our community to feel comfortable with where we're going, they need to know that we have a defined plan and a vision for where we want Celine Air Schools to be. Again, the strategic framework developed on one page, it's on our website, we talk about it a, a lot. We had a professional development survey that went out this week, over the next two weeks. Our certified staff are being asked to fill out a lengthy process, or a lengthy professional development needs assessment, and we talked specifically about these goal areas. So, again, when we talk about these concepts related to alignment, we want you to know that we're, we're, we have aligned our professional development associated with these, not only this year, but ultimately now we're asking for feedback from our staff associated specifically with where, where we think we're going. And then the next, the next one, and I've shared a similar document a couple of times, I want it, I want you to take a look at. This is the strategic framework goal for goal number two, and then if you look, the action step is to research, develop, and assess next-generation classrooms at all levels, including the development of contingency plan for the expansion of these classrooms based upon resources, availability, and timelines. Common threads present that all activities will include core beliefs, architecture, digital communication, associated with this. So if you see, this is where we start to get in to really the meat associated with what we wanna do. We've established for each, and this is, this, this template is used for all of our 27 action items. What are the core beliefs associated? Why is it we're doing what we're doing? When we talk about things like Pooh Corner, why is it that we want to have early intervention? We have core beliefs associated with the benefits of early intervention, particularly with students who are at risk. And so, we wanna make sure that whenever we begin a conversation, even at the action plan level, not just the goal level, we start with a core belief associated with that. People need to understand, and we need to understand the why behind what we're doing. Next is the purpose, and then you get to the next one, we talk about this, kind of these targets associated with a multi-year planning phase. And if you can look through there, you see there's several areas that we've targeted, but then we jump right to goal one here. So this document will be revised each year, and you look at goal one, six classroom learning labs, with additional 4c spaces across the district, project lead to way, capstone, expansion of special education, open spaces at the high school, there's Woodland Metals and Alter High School spaces, and development evaluation and review. Essentially, we say we wanna pilot what we, what it is we think of with next-generation classrooms. And those of you who were part of the tours that occurred earlier, you've seen some of the things we're trying to do, we're continuing to try. So again, as our implementation plan and our action plan calls for, we're not saying we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna take up and we're gonna drop a million dollars in, in one-to-one devices and, and, you know, and spray iPads across the district. We said, our goal right now for this year associated with this, this action step is to really develop a pilot approach to it and a lab approach to it. Architecture, we do talk about specifically what our facilities look like, and then our curriculum practices and our theoretical framework, because, again, we wanna make sure as we think about goals, and we talk about this a lot, it can't be the devices that drive. The conversation needs to be really what we think about behind it. You get down to the bottom, you know, we did talk about the, the resource issues. External needs associated a lot of times with some of the goal areas, when we get to them, the external needs might be the Michigan Department of Education, it could be at the county level, it could be a need in the community that we have to have, and if you look there, it kind of talks about in this one, what those external needs in terms of community, we need architectural support, we need business partners to help, you know, us achieve our goal here, or relative to action step. And then ultimately, who are the staff involved? And if you notice, the key staff, Board of Education is listed. The Board of Education needs to understand what we're doing associated with this plan, and, and ultimately, and I'll talk about this in a little bit, you know, your, your role as a, as a board really is starting to ramp up associated with this, with this plan. We've had the, the full 60-person community group, and, and they've handed us this plan, and now it's an opportunity for us to work, you know, to, to make sure that it comes to fruition in a, in a way and in a manner that we can all be, be happy about. And then if you look, we do a little SWOT to each of our, each of these areas to talk about our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And so, again, if we wanna make sure that, if we look specifically, not only at the, at the district, and I know the board has done that, administratively, we've looked at kind of what are these, these kind of overarching, you know, issues that we need to deal with. We wanna kind of bore down and look at specific action steps, and what are the issues that we're facing associated with those. So this is the template that we've developed specifically into the action plans. And then it, it comes back to, to the accountability piece. If we're going to achieve what we say we're gonna achieve on these, and we need to make sure that it continues to be upfront, we need to make sure that we have alignment. Our district in building improvement plans, I talked about our professional development plan. We can't say this is what we want, and then go out and do training and train our staff in areas that are associated with, with these areas. So we, our choice group program has been aligned to our professional development, and now we want feedback on that to make alterations. Our building and department goals, and I'll use Mr. Clary's department, I think, you know, if, if this is where we're going, what are the types of things that we need to think about for our maintenance and grounds department that are gonna allow us to make sure that architecture changes? If we start to have furniture that is soft seating, what type of cleaning products do we need? The, the issues that we're talking about in, in retooling and reshaping Celine Air Schools cut across every department. And so as we, we move forward, we were trying to make sure that we are inclusive of all of our buildings and departments associated with that. And again, you know, we did look to alignment to the, to the SWOT that the board did last year in, in February, and certainly I think it's an opportunity for us to do that check at the retreat a year, now a year later. Communication is, is continuing to be key, and I ask that you, as you communicate to folks in the community, we continue to focus on the why. It's not that we want, it's not that Scott wants a new iPad. It is that we wanna make sure that our students are prepared to be lifelong learners and ready for the 21st century workforce and for college. And so I think that's important, that we continue to do that, clearly articulate the framework. People need to know those, those five goal areas, and then we continue to share the fact that, that this is a working, living, reading document. Revisions and adjustments are happening. Because we revised and adjusted this plan, does not mean we were wrong when we started, it means we've learned as a process. We need to model this idea that we're gonna continue to learn, and there are gonna be different iterations of the framework as we go along. In fact, if you notice on this document, we started calling it the 2013 and 14 strategic framework. It's likely there'll be some changes that'll occur in this and tweaks that'll occur. Will, will the overarching theme change? No, but I anticipate there'll be some alterations there. I'd like to be able to go back over time and look at each of the years and watch how, how we've adapted to the new information and the input we get. Shared ownership, certainly we wanna make sure that, that the goal and action step leaders are clearly defined, but we all need to own this, and if you look, and we talked about the idea that we need not only to share in the leadership, but we need direct responsibility, so there are specific individuals responsible for certain things. I know, I use Curtis as an example because his went out. One of our, our action steps associated with goal number four is to make sure that our finance, that our curriculum and, and HR departments are out in buildings, meeting with staff. And Kurt, you know, sent his email, he's specifically responsible for making sure that that occur, and, and again, is starting that process today. Avoiding distractions, and I, again, I wanna go back to, if, if the strategic framework is our, is our goal and our stated roadmap, I encourage us at the administrative level, at the board level, to avoid distractions. There will be distractions, and Janice touched on a few of them, over the next several months, and we need to, to work to avoid that, and again, to ultimately maintain focus in order for this to be successful. And a couple of you, Mr. Zimmer and a couple others have said, you know, we need to maintain focus in order for this to be successful. If we take our eye off this, you know, it becomes, it's something that becomes in jeopardy. Board, oversee progress in, in the process with, with goal reviews. We did a goal review, Janice rolled out the five-year tool, that was one of the action step goals that we had for last year, we rolled that out. Those are the types of things we wanna make sure we continue to, to use as our, kind of a guide as we develop our process, and now ultimately at the retreat, we'll have an opportunity to do that in a little greater depth. Provide direction and guidance as needed, we're gonna be looking for feedback. And then establish funding priorities and provide resources. You know, this, this review of the framework at the retreat, and this review in the spring, as we look at what iteration we wanna make, ties right into our funding cycle. And as, as Mr. Carter had said, you know, that funding cycle is gonna drive a lot of, of what we do in terms of our facilities, in terms of our, of the changes we're ready to make, so. All right, I went through pretty quick on that, but if you have questions about the strategic framework or, or goal action areas?
Any questions? I think, yeah, it's a great start. I think, and maybe when we have the retreat, it would, if, at some point, we gotta start populating these goals with, you know, with what the financial commitment will be. And, and for us to plan that out and to be able to find those financial resources to be able to do that. And, and I think you articulated well about the distractions, you know, distractions can be good or bad, depending upon which way they, they fall on us, but, but at some point, you know, we gotta start throwing some numbers at this, even if they're just target numbers, so we can get our, we start getting our head around what the financial commitment's gonna be, and then it's our job as a board to find a way to get there.
I was, the point you made about prioritization, I think that's the key. It's not a question of what we can do and what we can't do. The answer is we need to do all of it, but one priority, and then what things can be bundled together to make it leveraged for success.
Yeah, and I don't wanna create any more work for Janice Moore, I really don't, but, but.
Goal line is February 3rd.
But, but I'm thinking I- But we, but we should, you know, but I'm, I'm thinking out loud here a little bit, but for each goal, we should have, you know, what the financial commitment will be, and then how does that, you know, translate to our budget? And somehow we have to link the two, and do that in a user-friendly way. We don't want you to spend hours and hours and hours on it, but it'll kind of be a good roadmap for us to see where that fits in.
Can you have it accessible in the web so that just anybody can?
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Superintendent Grayden. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize items A through E as part of the consent agenda.
Someone?
Trustee Delhay, and a second.
Second.
Trustee Zimmer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I did bypass our student rep at the beginning of the meeting, and did you have anything to say, Raphael?
The only thing I had to say is best of luck to our boys' basketball team, which already started playing, so.
I know where, I know where you're going. I guess I have a question for you. With three, three consecutive snow days, has, has Grinch, has Grinch Green made the transformation to Soft Scott?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Very welcome.
Thursday was not going to be a snow day.
You're a fan favorite on Twitter.
There you go. Trendy, trendy. This is a portion of the meeting where members of the audience can address the board for up to three minutes.
You haven't heard from me, you haven't heard from me for a while. Val Porter, President of Support Staff. I just want to bring up, I'm encouraged and looking forward to School of Rock, and hope to see everybody there. I, nothing was said, so I just want to bring that out.